How do we get back on track to what we want to talk about? Long-range planning.
We need to...
Yes, we have to come back.
...reestablish. Okay. Rachel, are you ready, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Now we're ready, David.
I have a... Circle back to communication.
Okay.
The city manager reports. What about making them public? Yeah. You've already done the report. Turn it into a newsletter or something that gets posted online. Bob had sent me his reports. Can't ask for any more about how to report on what's going on in the city. So...
Why don't we just automatically make them public that you can choose?
What's relevant for the public?
Sure.
Yeah, you could cut and paste and... And I do have to say, and I sent you this in an email, but I truly, truly appreciate your weekly reports. I just... Bob, here, the way you're communicating with us and the simple little... And then you end it with "Have a great weekend." Back at you. I do, I appreciate it.
Do Perkins have a new speaking?
We do. And he's...
You know what they are? They're starved for something to put in it. Would they publish your report?
They do. And he's usually... He's typically got a report every two weeks. He's... They call him and ask him, or he calls them. So our commission meeting is in there.
Yeah, I could type my... Like, my weekly email, send to them. I've thought about doing that, because it's all public record. I'm just...
Yep.
Vomiting information, basically.
I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
So if they're asked, they have an idea of what...
And I like what Tammy said as well, as far as, you know, maybe not all of it, but the important things to help communicate with people. Yes.
What is the worst problem in Perkins that the board has never dealt with? As far as the city, something within the city's control that needs to be changed or fixed that you haven't gotten around to? Is there anything that stands out? Justin, anything just comes to mind? Or are the right projects being worked on?
The right projects are being worked on, man.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think he's correct. Just feels like everything takes a long time.
It will. There's a reason. It's somebody else's money.
But it's like Mr. Tackett was saying a while ago. He's like, "You're a coach and you want things to happen." But it's all a process, and I get that, but...
We sometimes don't recognize cities are amongst the most regulated businesses in the world.
Correct.
You report to DEQ, you report... Everything we do is regulated.
And Rachel doesn't let him spend a dime hardly at all.
Yeah. I mean, we are heavily regulated.
Yes, we do. We love her for that.
We have that question come up a lot. A business person gets elected to council and says, "I don't like this." Because in the business world, if I wanted something done, I would go do it and get it done. My answer is usually, "But it's not your money." You can do that if it's your own personal money, but this is someone else's.
I think that was my biggest takeaway when I got on the board, was that the process really takes a long time. And our administration does a great job to keep us financially stable. So not to say that you wouldn't want to hinder progress, but you really don't want to rock the boat when you're talking about somebody else's money.
Yeah. It's... The process is built that way for a reason. So Sarah, what is the worst problem of the city that has not been dealt with or that you think needs to... Or is there one? There may not be one, but...
Perkins is an older community, so I think that there's infrastructure projects that need to be gotten to. But again, I wouldn't say that that's the worst, or that it's being ignored, or that it's not getting gotten to. Like Justin said, I think that we've done a good job, and we're continuing to learn how to make decisions, and how to move forward, and how to delegate those projects to who it needs to be delegated to, to get it done.
The need to exceed the resources, if it's like every other city.
That's my biggest takeaway. It's April.
Is there any project that just stands out? Boy, I wish we had fixed this.
I know it's in the works. It's like both of them said, "It's in the works." But, you know, I think sometimes the sewer system comes up a lot with people, literally.
They would like for you to fix that one first, wouldn't they? Three things that cost money are the three Ps. Personnel, police, food.
And I think, you know, I so appreciate Bob taking me on a ride around town. And I learned so much that day. And, you know, the pooh. And everything that goes into that is really educational. And I'm an educator, so I love learning. And this is great for me, because I feel rejuvenated a little bit, diving into things and learning new things. Of course, going into the big water tower, acting like a kid, I echoed it.
I didn't get to go to the water tower.
Well, ask for the water tower, it'll take you.
Autumn, is there any project within the city's control that's...
Before we go on, I want to say something about personnel.
Okay.
I'm so excited about our new parking rec director. I got to meet him today. I'm so excited. Gene, to be here and have two new employees that I... Rachel just needs... Not because she's not adequate at all, but because she is totally overworked.
I mean, it's not me, it's everybody.
I am very happy that Bob has found the money and had the savings to be able to help our city. It doesn't just help Rachel as an individual or Bob, but it helps our whole entire city when we can have... Yeah, that's the word. Thank you, dear. Efficient. So I'm sorry for interjecting. Go ahead.
Autumn, anything that stands out?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's some background to it, though.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, because I have lived here for a long time, infrastructure is very important, and I agree 100% with that. But long before I became a commissioner, I have been in the 503 for the library of Friends of the Library, and I'm also on the Library Trust for the city. Finishing or restoring or finishing the building that we currently own for the new location for our library, something that's very important to me. And I think anybody that's sitting up here that had a conversation with me before they either ran or thought about doing it, I have always tried to be very upfront about, "This is something I'm going to advocate for." Like, I don't... I mean, it's not a secret. I don't try to hide it from people, like...
Is it funded?
It is not. And we have exhausted... Staff has exhausted our grants bribe program, trying to find grants. But... And there is a long, convoluted background to how it was supposed to be funded and... You know, I'm a big believer in the past is the past, but the building is still sitting there empty.
Do you have any outstanding general obligation bonds that the voters have approved that go on property tax? And two, do you have any capacity to do more?
Possibly. I don't know that... Well, I mean, I guess...
The voters would have to approve it, but have you looked at what...
Some capacity. I don't know how much.
Because sometimes those projects are...
Find out.
Yeah. Maybe that's... Find out what the capacity is and...
That would be a policy decision.
Policy decisions, whether you do it.
The only thing that comes up quite a bit along these lines is parks.
Yeah.
We had a... Throw a million dollars into a park pretty quick.
Oh, yeah.
And then you got people like him that wants me to throw a million dollars into sewer lines.
Some of those projects, though, general obligation bonds have to be approved by the voters, but they are extra money to do those projects that we think the voters will approve. And whether it's a library, a park, those are a lot easier. They're not going to approve them for sure. But those are a lot easier to take to the public and see if they support it. Would they support it with the library?
At the current state, I'm not sure. It was brought into... It was brought into a negative...
That's not... I'm just saying it's been that long.
Negative connotation. And public opinion, in my opinion, has swayed over a library because of frustrations and hurt feelings. And that's how all of that goes, but...
That usually dooms a project.
It does. I just can't... And that's why I say I've always tried to be upfront about it, because I was that long before I was here.
Right.
I'm a teacher. I'm going to advocate for literacy. That's my job.
Well, maybe a good solution is for Bob to see what capacity is available. Maybe in the next 30 days or so. Try to have some answers to how much capacity you have. And then, once you know what that capacity is, to see what projects you could do, or whether you think they're feasible to do projects with that capacity. And then, I can assure you, general rule with general obligation bonds is if you're not 100% in favor of it, if it's a 3-2 vote to go do something, it's going to have a hard time selling. It should be projects that all of you can support and say, "This is a great project for Perkins. Let's convince the voters to vote for it." And it is work to get those passed. It takes communicating well and getting information out well. But it's interesting. Those are doable for today's. Lots of cities are doing general obligation bond projects and getting them approved. Whether that should be the first one leads to a good discussion of whether it should be that, or parks, or something else. Maybe it's other city facilities. You probably have a long list of needs that exceed what's available. And I would want a staff idea of, "What do you rank as the worst facility?" The way we approach it in Sand Springs, "What's our worst facility that we have employees working in?" And they just had a GL bond for animal control facility because it is a horrible working condition for the employees. So the voters approved a new animal control facility. But that becomes the argument. "We're working on the worst facility that we have employees working in day to day."
Do I get to answer the question?
Sure.
I think the 23,000 feet of sewer line and 15,000 feet of water line that needs to be replaced now.
Yeah.
Now. And we're not... And you put a million dollars or so, you get about 9,000 feet.
Yeah.
And that's... Our employees are working on that.
Yeah.
I was...
And you inherited that problem.
Yeah, it's well, the original part of Perkins. And that's where our problems have been.
Sewer backups.
Friends have paid enormous amounts of money.
Bill will advocate for those being done as soon as possible.
It's no secret what my passion is. Parks are right, all right? That's easy. Or the police department. That's another passion of mine. But the ride along with Bob was not only enlightening, it was like... I guess there was a city who diverted their... I learned this at the mayor's school. There was a city that had all this excess money for sewer and disposal and all that. And they decided, since they had all this excess money, that they were going to go ahead and put it into something else, since they had all this excess money. And then, come to find out, their little sewer plant went... And you're talking millions of dollars, and they didn't have it. So that's one thing I've learned in the ride around of being here, is the savings that these people have put for us, set aside. And then, we just okayed a couple of months ago, new valves. And the maintenance that Bob has insured for our sewer facility and allowing people to dump and then putting up... Making restrictions on the dump and things like that, and having more control over what's going on, has saved our city a lot of money. A lot of money. And I am, for one, proud of them for that. So as we start to look and start to try to prioritize what's the worst in the city, and I... No offense, sister. Our passions... You set aside our passions and what's important to maybe us personally. I think we just look at Bob as our guide and our go-to as the person we hired to do the job. And you tell us what's most important. So...
I will always, and I have told anyone who said this, I will always advocate for that library. But I have always said I am completely okay with being outvoted about that. Like, I will not not advocate for them. Like, I think it is a very crucial part of this community.
But the priorities have to be the priorities.
But I'm a firm believer in there's some wants and then there's needs. And I feel like there has to be balance of those two things. And I think you have to balance both of those things for your citizens. And that's, you know, I'm a firm believer in those things. But I also respect you guys. And if you guys don't feel like the library is the thing, then I am okay with saying, "Hey, I did what I could." Like, I spoke my piece. I tried to get that going. Priority was not that as the group, like...
That... See, but that other thing is not important.
Because I don't... I don't not... I mean, I understand that everything that was listed is a priority.
It's like when sewer is coming up through Commissioner Rabello's house, or there's roots... Huh? I mean, your parks can be important. Your libraries can be important. But when people have sewer coming up through their... Into their homes, it's... That's a pretty big deal.
And I live in the older part of Perkins. And my house, 1973, is when it was built. And it's... Yeah. When I... 12 days after I moved in, we had a sewage issue. I mean, I didn't call the city. I was blessed to be able to take care of it myself financially. But when we start talking about what we want to do, I consider myself and I consider my neighbors and my older, you know, neighborhood. And I think that to look long-term, at long-term planning, if we want to fix the roads and we want to do all these different infrastructure things, you have to start under the ground. Otherwise, you have to rip up those landfills and just lay them down. And so we're kind of in a pivotal point where we can progress and we can do certain things, but we also have to look at what is outdated. And to me, that is what's important, so that progress shoots even further. It's like an arrow. It'll shoot even further. So, you know, I do rely on infrastructure improvements so that we can continue to move forward and create those projects so that it looks like we have a more lasting progress.
You can't do economic development without infrastructure.
No, and you... And if you... I'm learning here. If you don't take care of the hard infrastructure, it's really hard later on to take care of the soft infrastructure, which is the people programs, which is parking rec, which is the library, which is senior citizens. But if you don't take care of the hard infrastructure, then you're still not taking care of the people, even though they may want all these other programs. You can't get to those other programs if the hard infrastructure and economic development, if all that is not taken care of first.
I agree with what you're saying 100%, but I also think it's relevant to say, if you don't have citizens in your town, it doesn't matter what's under the ground. And if we don't have services for our citizens, they won't be here.
But I... Don't you think that we're trying?
No, I do. I do. I'm just saying, like, I think that's why I say there's a balance of what you want and what we need. And while we focus mainly on what we need, I think we also have to understand, we have to provide our citizens with services too that will make this the community they want to be at. Because until we started Park and Recs again, I felt like we were telling, "Hey, Perkins is great, but go to Stillwater, because they've got all the things."
And I agree with you as well. It's a balancing act that you have to do in prioritizing the hard infrastructure. But even though we might not have a library that we want right now, we have a really good program here. My granddaughter comes up here, and she's about got her necklace full of all her prizes that she's gotten.
You've done a great job.
Because she's come up here. I mean, and it's advertised well. It's out there. I got some Holy Ghost bumps on that one, because my granddaughter totally enjoys the library. And the parking rec coming up and about. And we've got new volunteers at the Senior Citizens Center. We've got Bob involved on that board as well. So I think that... I just really feel like we're headed in the right direction.
All of the plates.
Yeah.
Bob, if you could ask them to set a long-range goal that they have not yet set, what would it be? What do you need them to set as a goal?
We have a limited amount of money and a limited amount of borrowing capacity and grants.
Hard to get.
So do we want to... What do we want to do?
Yeah.
We talked about the library. We talked about the parks. We talked about water and sewer and infrastructure. Tell me which direction you want to go, and then I'll do my best to get it there.
All goes back to decisions.
Yeah.
So...
And I assume you did a lot of that during the budget process already. You've set it for this next year, but really over the next 10 years, where do you want to be? And that's something each of you needs to put some thought into. I would encourage you to read the materials and make some notes and think about where you want it to go over time. And then how do you help get it there? I think the most important thing you can help get it there is to do your jobs well and manage well and create a good team so you can have good, healthy discussions about where do we need to go to set priorities? Because if you don't do that, you won't get there. And having everyone on the same page and working as a team will create an environment where you can do those things. We went to a city that hadn't had a planning meeting in 30 years. None. And it showed. They also hadn't seen their city attorney in five years. They'd been sending him a check every month, but they hadn't seen him in five years.
Tammy.
Rachel, about the sewer.
I just blacked out for a second. You okay? I'm kidding. I mean, at least Bob's here for Tammy to talk to, so she's not like, you know...
I don't know if this is relevant or irrelevant to the current discussion, and it's no fault of anybody. But the capital improvement plan was developed by Rachel and I.
Yeah.
And the mission statement and the core values, that was developed by me when I got here 10 years ago, because there wasn't one. And so, I don't know. Sometimes you want more engagement, and sometimes you wish you wouldn't ask for more engagement, I guess, but... I don't know how else to say that.
And sometimes you fill the void that is left by others not doing what they're supposed to.
Sure.
And sometimes those others who don't do what they're supposed to get involved in things that really are none of their business.
But the others... The positive side is we have all these problems, but they're all related to growth.
Yeah.
Right.
They're growing, thanks.
And there's a lot of places that has got these...
Absolutely.
So, but I think I need to know, you know, do I need to be focusing on this 23,000 feet of sewer line and these 15,000 feet of water lines that keep breaking all the time? And trying to do, you know, there's programs out there now with funding opportunities? Or do we want to try to go a different direction? I can do more than one thing, but I need to know. I think my bosses need to tell me, you know, "Where do you want me to take the ship?"
Well, and I think Bill was talking a little self-interested when he talked, and I'm with him, because I'm the lawyer. But when he talked about the issues being infrastructure, policing, and personnel, because those are the things that OMAX is going to be paying out the most on, you know? And so I can... Every penny that you pay out for a cop who doesn't Mirandaize or whatever, you know, is money that could have gone to the library. And so I think those... And that's just an example of this type of thing.
Didn't some of our insurance go up because of a payout for some sewer issues?
And it can. I don't know if it did, but it can.
I think it did in the past. I don't know why.
Yeah. So you do end up in that cycle where you're... You don't have the money for the extra growth issues because you're not taking care of your basics. And I would say that infrastructure is always going to be an issue. I think you've got an amazing police department. I like that. Personally, I like the philosophy of the police department. Personnel, I don't need to comment on. He's done nothing about it.
Yeah, they...
You know, that's a... We're in a good spot, I think.
I think...
I mean, I would add to that, because this is my thing, you know? Obviously, her thing. But I think that Paul Rice, you really need to be looking at, looking at and understanding, planning and zoning. And some things that you could do, because right now, you may not be able to throw a whole lot of money at downtown. But you need to decide if ultimately the decisions you make day to day will reflect a big decision that you made. In other words, I drove through Cushing. I drive through Cushing every time I come here, and when I go home.
Bless your heart.
Yeah. But one day, I thought, "Oh, I got this..." I got this letter I meant to mail. I'm going to go find the post office. Oh, my GPS is a mile down the road. So I went into town, and it broke my heart, what their downtown looks like. And I think about Muskobe, where I grew up. And it's the same in every... Lots and lots and lots of little towns have no downtown anymore, but they've got that strip along the highway where all of their strip malls are. And so I think that's one thing that you may want to consider is, what is your priority? Your priority may be, "We really just have a couple of blocks of downtown? Let's go develop the highway." That is a legitimate response. That's a legitimate decision. But that's a discussion I think that needs to be had, because if you don't choose to develop downtown, you're choosing not to. Does that make sense? You are making a decision.
We used to have a downtown committee, a development committee. It just fall apart.
Private deal, not affiliated with the city.
And there are some good downtown developments that have been done around the state. Some cities have been very successful at it. If that's your goal, find those. And you can model it after what they've done. But you get to decide that. Back to... Why are you deciding about a pump station when you shouldn't be deciding the bigger picture? Your job's so much more important than some of that minutia. You had a comment.
I wanted to participate in the whole, "What do you think we need to be looking at?" conversation, if I could. And I agree with everything everybody said, but I wanted to put my two cents worth in, because I'm also the chair director, is that we continue to look at personnel. And thank you for giving us three new people this year. That's awesome. But we still don't have... You said one person for every 100. So now we're at 25 or 26 at 3,100, so...
You're still way understaffed.
250. It should be one person for every 100 citizens. So we have, I think, when we are able to hire the new public works person, I think we will then be at 26.
And what are we at now?
Population of five.
Oh, population 3250. So just long range, I want us to keep thinking. And to do that, you know, retention is so important. So we have to pay a competitive wage, because it costs you 35% of an annual salary to replace an employee in terms of lost wages and, I mean, lost time and...
And everything you want to do causes someone to do some more work.
And so we're also talking economic development And so we're also talking economic development needs to be up there to help pay for all of that.
Exactly.
And the other thing that's wonderful about Perkins, which is why I, well, I moved here side unseen, but I stuck around.
Were you seriously side unseen?
Side unseen.
Oh, sister.
I pulled in.
All right.
And I'm living here. Is that the people that work in administration at the city love Perkins. That's why they do the job. And so that's something to retain, but continue in terms of culture and morale.
And that's a part of the group you can help with.
Absolutely. Of course.
Why are you still teaching?
You know, the mayor spoke on economic development. David, on Friday, will be before the Norman City Council doing his training. Third largest city in the state. He will tell them that Stillwater has north of sixty million more dollars annually than Norman does.
Edmund.
Edmund, brother. Edmund. Sixty-eight million dollars annually more than Norman does.
And sales tax.
Now, why is the quality of life in Edmund the way it is versus other places?
Sixty million a year goes a long ways to pay for it.
But Norman has OU.
Kinda helps being right next to it.
Norman has OU and Edmund has U C O. And Edmund still has sixty-eight million dollars a year more than.
They also have, they have two colleges.
Edmund's made a lot of decisions to look at the future.
Exactly. Infrastructure's in good shape.
Their roads are.
Their city government, the way their, their city employees and the way that they hire and reign for ten is.
Yeah, they're the gold standard in Oklahoma. I, we think. Edmund has been for the long period of time.
Yeah, there's probably Edmund and I don't know who'd be second.
And they'll give you another comparison. Sales tax revenue, Edmund compared to Broken Arrow. Edmund brings in a hundred and sixty million a year. Broken Arrow brings in sixty million. Hundred million a year difference.
What's their, what is their sales tax?
Rates are gonna be similar, but maybe a little bit different.
What's the population of Edmund?
Broken Arrow's bigger. Hundred million a year. Hundred million a year. Billion bucks over ten years. You do a lot with a billion bucks.
And our city has grown more than any other city around us in the last two years. And we still struggle with sales tax and economic development.
Well, the way.
Go ahead.
I know this isn't the topic of the evening, but I'm sure you told them this. Economic development moves at the speed of greed. If you guys aren't in the land business, if you don't have economic incentives to, then people are gonna live here and they're gonna shop in Stillwater.
Land and money to put in infrastructure when they need it.
For those bigger stores like Sam's, I was in Sam's in Edmund. And the lady, the cashier said, there's a lot of you guys up near Stillwater that come down here. I should get a bus, take orders, and come to Stillwater. And I was, I was in shock that she had made that comment. And that's why they have a lot more sales tax revenue is we're all going, I mean, Stillwater, all these areas around here, going to Edmund to shop.
How many people in this room go to Stillwater Walmart to get stuff they could get in Perkins?
It's cheaper.
I do, but I'll tell you, that Williams grocery store over there is in line, if not cheaper than Walmart.
I go to Williams a lot because I hate shopping.
I didn't say that to be accusatory.
No, no, I, I did truth.
It's part of this conversation.
Yes.
Where do you buy your gas? Do you buy it when, if you work in Stillwater? Do you buy it before you go to work or after you go to work in Stillwater? Or do you go to the on cue with the drive-through? I have coffee.
I, I have to admit, since the election, I have purchased my gas in Perkins. Even if I'm, I just top it off if I have to. And if it's a long trip, I'll have to gas up along the way, but I'll pull in here over at on cue and I gas up.
I will tell you right now, my way to work, my gas light came on, but I would be fine. When I got back in my car to come here, I was like, well, I cannot be late and I'm not getting gas. I have like eight miles on my car. That also my.
And there's a lot of other, I mean, seriously, this, my eyes have been opened a lot. And anything I can do to help the sales tax in my little city, I'm gonna do.
Well, I've said so many times that one of the things that people learn from public service is that if it was easy, it would have already been done. You know, you, you, people think, well, the government should just fix that. And you're like, well, if that was easy, it would have been done.
I say that to my hitting and pitching clients all the time. If it was easy, there'd be four girls here at six o'clock in the evening on a hot night, not just you. So we, we keep trudging forward on that.
I will say, Bob and I have had this conversation, and I know I've introduced the conversation to the chamber about having an advertisement run during the O S U football games. And that says, because we have a lot of traffic, but they all turn at Ampride. They don't come the mile into town to go to our McDonald's, to go to our Sonic. I, I don't know how to make that idea move forward, but some kind of advertisement as far as, hey, stop in Perkins on the way home instead of.
With Pistol Pete's House in Perkins.
Yeah.
Literally.
Use that.
So, I mean, and he's on our water tower. I don't know how to take that idea and I don't know who to take that idea to. Bob and I have had this conversation as far as this is an idea, but I don't know what to do with it. But I do think, because I know like the co-op does a, does a commercial during the football games. I mean, um, because I'm always like, well, why don't we do one? So, but people don't know what they don't know. People don't turn this way to come down. We do have some traffic that goes through Main Street, but nothing like that turns at Main, at Ampride to go to, go to Edmund.
I have to tell you, there was that city attorney meeting for city attorneys in the, in the Tulsa area that they've been, he's been doing for years, years and years.
Decades.
Yeah. And, um. And one of the, the, Scotty took the attorney, second time he's told me, if I brought up Perkins, he says, they have the best beef jerky over there.
Ralph's.
You know, and, and what I, what I was thinking from what you were saying was that people aren't gonna drive into Perkins for McDonald's or Sonic. I hate to say that.
No, you're right.
We need something different and unusual or, you know, what, and whether it's beef jerky. I mean, why would this guy take the attorney to the Perkins?
I have asked some people in the community. Yeah, it is.
It is important.
It is important. Because you could put it in your motorcycle jacket and chew on it while you're going down the highway. Speaking of motorcycles, I, I have asked a group, a community group to have a bike night. A lot of us bikers, not bicycles, motorcycle. Gotta get it right now.
I just.
Got it? We go places to eat. We will ride to eat. And we highlight. Yeah, I got you. Highlight the restaurants that we do have. We've got some good restaurants to go eat at. And I, I've asked for maybe a couple of bike nights in the fall and in the spring. And highlight the territorial plaza. I don't know, bring in food trucks. And we're getting all of that revenue because I'm serious. Bikers will ride someplace to eat. Look, we all ride to Icings to eat, honestly?
It's just a bar.
Our restaurants, our restaurants are.
It is not just a bar. It has the most amazing fried chicken. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna say it.
I didn't say anything.
Have you guys ever been to South Dakota?
On a motorcycle.
Have you ever seen billboards in South Dakota? Wall Strug. So it doesn't have to be a ton of money. What if there was a, billboards coming into Perkins that said, gas is much cheaper here? Or Ralph's beef jerky is the best because Buc-E's can't even sell that? Or, you know. Something, how many billboards could you put up for a TV ad at OU?
I don't know.
Billboard B.
All I'm saying is, if you find a little nichey hooky thing, like if you're going to Texas, Buc-E's in thirty-seven miles, Buc-E's in twenty-one. You go there and it's the world's most expensive gas. Because once you get in there and buy your forty dollar a pound big elk jerky and your big bag of twelve dollar almond nuts, then your gas is now twice what it would have been.
Well, and there, if you do something like that, it needs to be before Western if you're coming. Before Western because a lot of them cut off and it take Western into Stillwater instead of coming even in to.
Need it all the way over to Core Road.
Yep.
And I.
I agree.
You, you, your Chamber of Commerce people won't like this, and I'm not advocating for it, but the reality is the reality. And Manford moved the grocery store, the bank, and the McDonald's onto the highway. Because that's where the traffic is and that's where they wanna capture those dollars. That's why there's two dollar Generals on the highway. That's why the Sonic's on the highway. They didn't leave Phelps Grocery a block and a half, three blocks off of the highway.
And that's why sales tax is double what it was fifteen years ago.
It's doubled.
Doubled in fifteen years.
Sales tax is double. What about retail sales, David?
Yeah, same thing. More than doubled.
With a happy merchant class, the gross retail sales has more than doubled.
Yeah.
What is Manford's population?
Three thousand thirty-five hundred.
So it's a four A school, three A, four A? Same, okay.
I just think we're missing, we, I, I think, and maybe I'm wrong. I know a lot of Perkins' sales tax in Stillwater based off of that. But I do think there is a lot of shopping that takes place in Perkins. But I think, I feel like we're not taking advantage of the people that are coming through our town or are bypassing our town. So like you said, find a niche, find advertisement, find something. And O S U football and O S U basketball games bring a lot of out-of-town money in our town. But I don't know how we get their money. But we need, in my opinion, we need something that says, make that turn instead of going twelve miles to Guthrie and stopping at that gas station.
Might take someone more creative than me, Sarah.
Shoot, shoot, really hit that.
Justin? Bob's, we have the home, we have Pistol Pete's home.
Yes.
You're talking O S U, you're talking billboards. Find a way to combine all that.
The process for planning, though, wouldn't it be great if you knew in the next year, you're gonna have four meetings at lunch or whatever's convenient? And at each of those, you're gonna talk about some long-range planning project, whether it's economic development, public image, or whatever it is. And you get to talk about that.
And that was.
And come out of it with ideas of what you could do. Because that's what staff needs. They shouldn't be writing the mission statement and outlining the goals of council. They need you to help do that. And if you don't take the time to do that, that is dedicated to that, guess what? It never happens. You talk about pump stations.
Talk about ideas. Well, you're just talking about ideas. You're not making a plan.
Not making decisions, you're not making the plan. You're having an agenda discussion. So you can talk about economic development and nothing else and focus on it. And everyone bring their best ideas. And then hopefully at the end of it, you can capture it in some sort of resolution that says, these are the priorities that we came up with. And here's how we're gonna do it.
And this is, tonight is what I have, my vocabulary calls a work session. When there's no action on your agenda, it's a work, it's a work session. And I think we could have, Bob and I talked about this, having a work session quarterly. And have it in a different building. But it has to be able to come, you know, all the rules still apply. So why can't we meet in the training room at Fire Department? Take it to work. Meet at the sewer plant. There's tables for y'all to sit around, you know?
Figure out what your infrastructure is, figure out what your, your issues may be. Have a meet, have a quarterly meeting.
And I think that people enjoy seeing us do that.
As long as we post it and they have.
And if I have what you're gonna talk about, then.
So Bob, how do, how do you see P I D A being a part of our economic development and changing that, that group?
Well, you need to find money to put into P I D A, but it could be used as economic development. And then what you need to do, or, I've been sitting here thinking since Bill talked. How does, how does, how do you creatively finance the purchase of land?
Well, what Manford did, the unso, sole part of that is, that's the result of years of saving up money. And then what they did is they bought, how many acres?
Hundred acres.
Hundred acres.
Well, say subdivision, failed subdivision. Hundred lots in a failed subdivision.
And what did everybody in town say?
Yeah, rocks and trees. Why would you ever do that?
That's all it'll ever be. And then when they sold it, did they get their money back?
They've sold twenty-five of the hundred acres, paid close to a million to buy it. They've captured right at a million in what they've sold and still own seventy-five acres.
So when they were trying to get the grocery store out of that rat nasty little strip mall thing from the sixties, they couldn't quite get to the price that the grocery store wanted. So the mayor took eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper and said, City of Manford at the top. And said, here's Phelps, thank you for your generous contribution of eighty-three thousand dollars to the City of Manford. Wrote his name at the bottom of it. They now have a tax deduction and they got the deal done. And it cost one eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper.
So they bought the old grocery store. That's where the new city hall's going. And where the current city hall is will be declared surplus and they'll turn it, it's on the highway. It'll turn into an economic development project. So, so it's, takes being creative. It's difficult, takes long-range planning. It takes getting everybody on board, setting some goals. But if you, one way to look at it, and economic development's different. Cities didn't used to be an economic development business twenty years ago. And, and we have some cities who still don't think they should be in the economic development business, and that's their choice.
And we have, we, we have a person in town that oftentimes gets villainized. But we have one of the most active developers in the world. I mean, he, I argue with him all the time, you know, on plan reviews or codes or whatever. But he, you wanna talk about somebody that should be in on an economic development discussion? That man's got a lot of want to. He's got land and all he cares about is turning that land into money.
Is that, is that okay with you? If we had a meeting with him on the discussion part?
I talk to him all the time.
Well, he wants, he wants Perkins to thrive.
Yes, he does.
It doesn't bother me.
Key to success is having good partners sometimes, so.
I mean, his, his logo is a small city on the grove. And I.
It can't be on Facebook, and I'm not saying anybody here was. But when he's developing a piece of property, well, I can't believe he's taking the trees out. This is gonna kill Perkins. Well, you know what? It's America. You can buy it and grow open trees. I mean.
My caution would be, again, I think we've seen a lot of especially smaller towns and cities go, it's not a Walmart, that's a bad, bad example. Tesla, we'll throw that, I didn't say some Tesla, but you know, something I kinda consider Tesla like this. We're gonna throw a ton of money to get this business here. And we don't even know what we really want our city to look like. We don't know if we wanna develop our downtown or our highway. We don't know, okay, where do you wanna go? And we'll throw money at you, where do you wanna go? And I think that's a bad idea because then you, you end up with a lot of unintended consequences. If you have your, your plan, then you can say, where can we throw money to get people to come? And where do we want them in this big picture?
And you're not the only ones talking about these issues. We were in Broken Boat. City manager in Broken Boat decided they needed to buy downtown. That was dilapidated. City's been buying up buildings. They've been buying them, tearing them down, or rehabbing them and selling them. City doing it.
They bought a mobile home park that was a mobile home meth lab park. And they pulled out all the mobile homes and now they have land next to a restaurant that's on access to the highway that can be developed. They have pretty much a whole city block that was dilapidated buildings. They bought it, they tore the buildings down. Now they're redeveloping it.
But the key was, their city manager would say, they bought into a ten-year plan or a fifteen-year plan that we know this is gonna take a lot of time, it's gonna take patience. It cannot be, boy, why isn't this done already?
Finance it to get the return.
Yeah.
Knowing it's not gonna come tomorrow.
But there are lots of models of what cities have done around the state. Collinsville's done a great job with downtown. There are others that.
If you ever go to Bass Pro Shop in Broken Arrow, the city of Broken Arrow owns that building.
Get out of town. Get on the land.
Yeah, lease the building.
Brilliant.
So when you talk about having a lunch meeting and focusing on one thing like mission statement or economic development.
Gold setting.
The gold setting. I think, I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but for me, having a lunch meeting during my regular, you can have it in the summertime anytime you want. I'll be there.
It doesn't have to be lunch.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be lunch, no. A dinner meeting, it can be something a little more casual.
Okay.
It's a work session.
Can be food?
Yeah, food, yeah.
Can have food.
Sure.
Should have food.
Should have food.
Should have food.
Thank you.
You know, I was gonna bring something tonight, but I didn't have time. So, okay.
So we can do it on a Saturday?
I like that idea too. I do.
You're overemphasizing.
All right.
All right, Bob. Love you, Bob.
We have COVID.
And Rachel.
Oh.
You're overemphasizing, this is a process.
She can be there. Just enjoy yourself.
We can do dinner. We like dinner.
But if we're gonna feed you, you might as well come.
Monday through Friday might be a little easier.
We understand the work-life balance can be very important in terms of personnel, so.
Sounds like a personnel director.
Something like that, yeah.
The idea to feed city council people came to David and I from the city manager of Jinx, who was city manager there for thirty-three years. By the way, that's ten times longer than the. than the average tenure of city managers. And one of the things he did that made him long and successful is he fed his city council. Now Mike Nunley fed his city council. And so Jinx, because they had stability over three decades, of course, it doesn't hurt you're scooched up next to Tulsa. It doesn't hurt.
Sometimes it hurts.
Doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
But a town that size really shouldn't have an aquarium, but they do.
And they own it.
They own it. They built it.
Just no donuts, Bob.
They maintain that and everything.
Yes.
We're not advocating for an aquarium.
I love it.
Well, I just, he's talking about you bringing food, but no donuts.
I'll bring food.
But it's figuring out what you wanna have, and, you know, it's just an interesting discussion. Did all of that happen? Jinx thirty years ago was five thousand population? Uh, we could pull their state audit, but I would bet you it's gonna show they have approximately forty million in surplus funds. There are close to thirty thousand population thirty years later. Did all of that happen by accident? No. Somebody sat around and said, "What do we want Jinx to be in thirty years?"
It's land.
And they stuck with it.
And moves at the speed.
And they had a very stable council over a long period of time who did their jobs well, and they let staff do their job well, and they set goals and worked toward those. Not a hard concept, is it? Uh, we've seen other cities who are the opposite of Jinx. We know cities that are broke. Uh, that's not an accident either.
So, I think we should, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe I'm off, but planning and goal setting is something that we would need to talk about first, potentially another one of these meetings like this, like a work session meeting like this.
And I think what what David said will all go is about all of us commissioners, we need to go home, and we need to come up with ideas, maybe where we personally would like to set goals, or where we'd like to be in ten years, and then come and have a work session.
Prioritize it.
Talk about it, discuss it. Um, like my dad used to say, "Cuss and discuss it," and then um, then set another meeting for that that priority, the one that we found at the top, and have a a session for that, so that it's not like a super-long amount of time at each little session. Like David said, prioritize, and we just take...
And be reali- and be realistic.
End the item is what you said, and talk about it.
One topic.
One topic.
And I I...
But I think, like Commissioner Rabello said, I I think maybe our first one needs to be goals, discussion of goals, mission statement, and goals at the top would be a target.
There are ten questions on the stability test. They all relate to each other. You've gotta be financially stable to be able to do economic development. You've gotta, the governing body's gotta do their job well to be able to do any of them. You've gotta have good meetings, because if your employees who show up for your meetings hate the process of coming to your meetings, they're not gonna stay. Why would they? You gotta find a way to make that an enjoyable process. The group of you need to work well together, so you'll enjoy it enough to stay and stick with it over time, because the worst thing we hear of staff members is the good council member who says, "I just don't enjoy it, and I'm not gonna do this anymore." I heard that from a s- a city attorney just this last week who said their very good mayor has told him, she's a retired school administrator, this mayor has told him, "You know what? I, this is a lot more trouble and a lot more work than I thought it was gonna be. I don't think I can continue doing this. I don't think I'll run next time." What chaos that's gonna cause in that town. Very good mayor, absolutely dedicated to it, worked very hard, but it's no longer enjoyable. And that's a sign of failure by the group of you if you don't make it enjoyable for each other, because we don't need you to quit and the two of you to quit and have to start over, because it's an educational process to start over. But money is a part of it. Sand Springs, we had a work session entirely about the finances of the city. Council had to understand it. Here's what's available in bond capacity, here's existing debt, here's how we compare to every city around us. Complete understanding. Here's where we are financially. And that led to them saying, "We've got about fifteen million in GO bond capacity. Let's make a list of what we want, and let's go see if the voters will approve fifteen million in projects." And they did, a month ago, in June, June election. But it's because all of those pieces fit together that a long history of council working well together, a high level of trust between administration and council leads to a lot of public image that improves public confidence, more money to do more work.
Well, I like Commissioner Rabello's idea of starting with goals.
So maybe, maybe ending here is for staff to come up with some proposed meeting dates for planning topics, and then it'll give Bob some time to see what is the bonding capacity. Is that even doable? You don't wanna have a failed election. You wanna wait until the timing is right, that uh all of you feel like things are going well and you have a lot of momentum. Maybe that's a year away. Sand Springs, when they decided to have a GO election, was about a year ago. So it, it was a year process to get to the point of of doing it, and then they had to convince the public, these are the great projects. So, all of that is doable. It all starts with a group of you. It really does.
This is the last type of a meeting you would ever expect for an insurance company to sponsor and support and encourage. Why do we do it? Doesn't seem insuancy at all, does it? Best-run cities and towns have fewer claims, and the claims they have cost less money to resolve. The best-run cities and towns have fewer claims, and the claims they have cost less money to resolve. So it all works together to lower your uncertainty, to lower your risk, and to make our pool stable over time, which it is. We appreciate y'all letting us come out tonight, and appreciate your service to your community very much, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, so, before we talk about adjourning, do, would we like to set a goal meeting here tonight?
I think we'll get together on some dates and send them out, or possibly have an agenda item talked about in August or summer. Maybe schedule some meetings.
Actually, yes, that's only...
Maybe come up with a proposed meeting schedule that can go on the next, the end of the review.
Okay.
Something like that.
So, um, so, um, you want us to send you suggested dates, or you wanna send through a date to you, or what would you like from us?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I'll throw something to you.
Ooh, catch. Ooh, nice.
Dodge.
Just kidding. Don't play dodgeball in my PE classes, folks. I know, it's too aggressive. Okay, so, um, commissioners, anybody have anything else to say? Justin, Sarah, Autumn?
I'm good.
Let me ask, have me one last hard question. Why do you vote to adjourn?
Why do we vote to adjourn?
Yeah.
Because somebody might have something left to say.
And the mayor asks, "Does anybody have anything left to say?" And when they say no, can the mayor say, "We're adjourned"?
Okay, we don't need to vote.
I, I'm just asking.
It seems risky not to do it. That's probably why we do it.
What do you have?
As an insurance company, you wanna analyze the risk?
I, I wanna make your clerk's job easier to not have to write down a heated motion and who seconded it.
When they recess, do you typically require a vote, a quorum, or they come back together?
Quorum, I take quorum defined by whether we have it or we don't. And if we have it, we have it.
Well, I, I've thought about that. You know, if we're not on video, you're gonna just be the four.
And if four of you are sitting here, you have a quorum. What if you vote no, you don't have one? You lose, right?
So, before we adjourn...
Schools always do that. I don't know why, school, Oklahoma schools, school boards always make a declaration that they have a quorum. It seems to me it's legally defined. You either do or you don't.
I know, I've thought about that.
But anyway, I, I, I've, I've...
It's not in robust social order?
Not in my city, it's about two.
We get it.
Yeah, I, I told you I was gonna ask.
I feel it's necessary to vote tonight, and then we make the difference not to. I feel like halfway through in the middle of the...
I don't stop. So, since the commissioners don't have anything else to say, does any staff have anything else to say? That's important.
Now you get it.
I make, I make a motion that we adjourn the special meeting.
My second.
Amen. Mayor. Yes, Sarah.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes. I warned you, I had a free two votes to adjourn.
It's the votes.
Let's adjourn, let's go.
And it's not bad.